Today is September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. As a preliminary matter, this is Woody Knight, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members in person anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Pete Pickles? Larry Murphy?
Here.
Mary?
Yes.
Scott Kenter? Let's see, Scott. I did see Pete on here, but he's not on the screen now either.
Would he hear me?
Oh, yep, Pete.
Right, I'm here, I just can't give you a visual, I have a poor signal.
Okay, that's great, thanks Pete. And Steve Mandrie, an associate member?
Here.
Okay, great, so Scott's the only one I don't see, but hopefully he'll be joining us. Town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kristen Grubbs, Planning Director?
Yes.
Okay. Anticipated speakers presented on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Damon Jesperson, Whiffle Tree Works.
He's just, he's just, it's hopping on.
Okay, great. And Elizabeth Maldari, Merrimack Valley Planning Commission?
I think she's gonna hop on later when her agenda item comes up.
Very good. Okay. Good evenings. This September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three, which extends the Governor's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, until March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found at the town's website, and which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to and entering meeting ID number eight three two seven one four one three oh five six, with the passcode one oh eight seven nine oh, or by calling in one nine two nine two oh five six oh nine nine U S, and entering meeting ID number and passcode when prompted. For Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video in our telephone conference. This meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable channel nine and on Zoom at www.tncTV.org. And the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting Business Ground Rules. Please, before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After the speaking, after speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motion. For all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer or phone to mute button with your computer and the phone as star six to mute and unmute when you are not speaking. There will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearing. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions. I will seek questions and comments through Zoom Raise Hand function. Video conference participants, to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more function next to your name. Telephone participants to raise your hand in a Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the raised hand button. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address, and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant or participant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of those in the raised hand form and again, afford the participant an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submitted of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record. And again, the participant applicant representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Okay, so we have the ground rules laid out. First thing on the agenda tonight, we'll do liaison and meeting reports. So we'll start with Larry with Z B A, please.
Yeah, thanks Woody. Z B A is meeting tomorrow night for their usual regular monthly meeting. They've got three public hearings on the agenda. Two Northern Boulevard to change in use for commercial residential to a two-family residential, an increase in footprint and upward extension for three thirty-seventh Street, special permit for renovations to the existing dwelling, including the decks, and for ten sixth Street, an increase in square footage and upward extension. I don't think any of these are issues that are likely to come before the planning board. And that's all I have for the Z B A.
Okay, and for Conservation Commission, we had a meeting last night. I don't have my notes in front of me, but we had public hearing on the Sunset Club, and that's going to be continued. They discussed some issues there with being in compliance. And we had, the other thing that pertain to us was three Newbury Port Turnpike, and there was a discussion about what the change that they had there and their expired order, and we're gonna have a site lock there as well. So that's all I have for Conservation. Monthly financial reports. This is the Planning Board financial report for July and August, two thousand and twenty-four. Payroll and invoices authorized. Payroll warrants for Planning Director and Special Projects Planning Manager. P R twenty-five dash one for pay period ending seven twenty-four. P R twenty-five dash two for pay period ending seven twenty-seven twenty-four. P R twenty-five dash three for pay period ending eight ten twenty-four. P R twenty-five dash four for pay period ending eight twenty-four twenty-four. P R twenty-five dash five for pay period ending nine seven twenty-four. And then Planning Board expensive voices, Verizon Wireless Planning Board iPad, seven twenty-five twenty-four, and Verizon Wireless Planning Board iPad, eight twenty-seven twenty-four. Okay. Meeting minutes. We have seeking approval of the August twenty-first, twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-four meeting minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review the meeting minutes?
Yes.
See nods, hi Scott, I just seen you on there. See nods, I will take a motion to accept the...
If I may, one question, I don't know if I have an older draft or not, but Kristen, if you look at the motion to set the Whiffle Tree Works Site Plan Review Public Hearing for tonight, the version I have says September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at seven colon one P M. I assume that should be seven fifteen P M.
Yes, it should be, thank you. I'll make that edit.
All right, with that edit, I'd move to approve the August twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four meeting minutes.
Okay, no one else has any anything to point out on the minutes, correct? All right, could I have a second? Okay, I believe that was a second, thank you. Roll call vote. Pete?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Scott? I saw Scott say yes, we knew that Scott. Mary?
Yes.
And Steve, how do you feel?
It's all good to me.
Okay, very good. Meeting minutes are approved for August twenty-first. Larry, you've been working hard on some of these meeting minutes. Would you like to give us an update on meeting minutes approvals?
Be glad to, Woody. If you recall, last time I reported that Kristen and I had been working hard on these and we had brought the two thousand and twenty-two meeting minutes up to date. For background, for those who might not be familiar with it, we did get behind during COVID on some of our meeting minutes. So I was able to report last time that two thousand and twenty-two is done, and we're working hard on two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-one, excuse me. Believe I have four more to go for that year, and then we'll have to take a look, Kristen, and see if there's anything else we're missing prior to that. But I think that should be the bulk of it. So I hope we can report very, very soon that everything's caught up to date.
Very good. I have seven twelve here. The next thing on the agenda is the public hearing for seven fifteen. Would you like to maybe start your plans report, Kristen?
Sure. See if I can use up a couple minutes. It's been very busy in the planning office. Welcome some of the public on this call who've I've had a chance to meet and talk with. I always appreciate people coming by and saying hello, so thank you. Let's see. The first Merrimack Valley Planning Commission Commissioners Meeting, which I will attend as the new Commissioner, is tomorrow. So that's exciting. I also will announce they have, they are celebrating, the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission is celebrating their sixty-fifth anniversary at their meeting in October. So I'll be sharing, that's, you know, gonna be a big event gathering celebration. I don't have the date right in front of me, but I will share that around. I believe it's October eighteenth. So anyway, looking forward to, you know, representing Newbury as Commissioner at that first meeting tomorrow. There are a number of sort of smaller projects. There are a couple A N Rs that I think will be coming to the Planning Board in October. We are having a discussion tomorrow about getting out to finally start working on the public trail that is, was a part of the Open Space Residential subdivision at Caldwell Farm. As some of you may be aware, that was a part of the Open Space subdivision, but has never actually been built on the ground. There is a trail easement on paper. But we're having a meeting to get out there and I'm very grateful to have Mason Farick, who's the new Conservation Agent, as a colleague next door to me, to participate in that. Looking forward to getting out on that property and the newly formed Open Space Committee is also interested in supporting that kind of trail work. So just good to get going on some of that. I see it's seven fifteen, so I will stop and finish up a couple more items at the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Tonight's public hearing is Damon Jesperson, Whiffle Tree Works, Level Two Site Plan Review Submission for nonprofit educational organization at One Marsh Meadow. Larry, as clerk, would you please read the legal notice?
I'd be glad to, Woody. The Town of Newbury Planning Board Public Hearing Notice. Residents of the Town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at seven fifteen P M, the Newbury Planning Board will hold an online virtual public hearing via Zoom to consider a site plan review application submitted by Whiffle Tree Works, Inc. for an expanded parking area for the nonprofit educational arts organization on property located at One Marsh Meadow Lane, map R twenty-two lot ten, within the Residential Agricultural District. The proposed development is shown on drawings entitled Site Plan, One Marsh Meadow Lane, Newbury, Massachusetts, dated February eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, and described in supporting materials. All is prepared by Hayes Engineering, Inc. The application is on file with the town clerk and in the planning office, twelve Kent Way, Byfield, Mass., and may be viewed on the town's website at https://www.townofnewbury.org backslash planning dash board backslash page, page is backslash current dash project dash applications dash and dash plans. For more information or to obtain a copy of the application, contact the planning office at nine seven eight four six five zero eight six two, extension three three six, or by email at assist-planner@townofnewbury.org. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the proposed development are invited to participate in the meeting remotely from their computer, tablet, or smartphone at https://us-zero-two-web.zoom.us backslash J backslash eight three two seven one four one three zero five six, or by telephone by calling one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine U S, and using meeting ID number eight three two seven one four one three zero five six, or may watch the meeting live on local access channel nine at www.tncTV.org. By Woody Knight, Chair, Newbury Planning Board, and the notice was published in the Newbury Fort Daily News on September second and September ninth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, thank you, Larry. As a background for the Planning Board's public hearing tonight, the building commissioner has reviewed the information from the applicant. The applicant is operating a nonprofit educational enterprise, which is a use allowed by right according to M G L forty-eight, section three. Site plan review is the required method of review. The board will be using the town's zoning bylaw, chapter ninety-seven, article nine, special regulations to guide this review process. The purpose of this regulation is to protect the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the public by providing for a comprehensive review procedure of plans for uses and structures which may have impacts on traffic, parking, services and utilities, environmental quality, water resources, drainage, and community character. Well, welcome, Damon. Would you like to present your project? Yeah.
If I may, just yeah, I just recuse myself from this process as I'm a director of butter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Pete. Welcome, Damon.
Thank you, Woody, and the rest of the Planning Board and everyone for attending. I think there has been some confusion about this project, given some of the legal hoops and advice that I have followed. But what I'm proposing tonight is the expanded parking around the historic barn, which will allow us to use it to further the mission of Whiffle Tree Works, which is a five oh one C non-for-profit, five oh one C three, sorry, non-for-profit, which aims to encourage and facilitate the development of arts in our area and the appreciation of the natural beauty of our surroundings. The parking plan is designed to have minimal impact. We have removed all parking along Marsh Meadow Lane until the barn because one of our previous events caused disruption on Orchard Street. We have met with both the fire chief and the police chief to ensure that this parking meets with their approval. And I don't know what else you would like from me at this time.
Kristen, you have the, do you want to share the plan?
Sure. Damon, you wanna kind of point anything out on the plan? I can put that up on the screen. Is that showing?
Yep.
Okay, so let's let you start with the first one that you submitted, Damon, which is the overview of the property.
So if we look at this, Orchard Street is out here where the mouse is now in the bottom left corner of the screen. Marsh Meadow Lane comes in here. We have the driveway for the farmhouse, which goes up there. And then parking is proposed on either side of the driveway of the barn. So you see these spots here and there. The handicapped access is this area right here with that black spot. We have existing parking that we've been using behind the barn. There's a lower driveway to the basement where we're proposing a few more parking spots. And on the far side of the building, the driveway comes back to Marsh Meadow Lane, and there are a number of spots right there. We have proposed overflow parking, which can come along Marsh Meadow Lane once you're past the building, and also use the evensides parking down at the horse farm, should it be necessary for a large event. Are there any questions?
Do we want to, before I entertain questions from the board?
Oh, sorry.
Do you want to read the department reviews, Kristen, from the police and the fire?
Um, I'll give a little background, which if some of you on the call have had a chance to look at the Site Plan Review Regulations, it lays out that there should be a pre-application meeting where the applicant comes in with their plans and it's reviewed by department directors. So we did hold that in August. And, you know, had a chance for the department heads to look at the plans up close, ask questions. As a follow-up to that, both the fire chief and police chief have done site visits with the applicant. And, you know, I wasn't on those, so if there are questions, you know, Damon will be able to answer those. But do you want me to, Woody, do you want me to read the whole letter?
It's entirely up to you, or you can just read a short version of it.
Yeah, they're not, they're not too long, I guess. I might as well, in case there are people on the call who haven't had a chance to see them yet. They are posted on the website. So from the police chief, Dear Newbury Planning Board, on Monday, August fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, I participated in a meeting to review the site plan for Whiffle Tree Works. I've outlined in the Planning Board Public Hearing Notice associated with the September eighteenth public hearing. Subsequent to that meeting on Friday, September sixth, Deputy Chief Aaron Wojcicki and I went to One Marsh Meadow Lane, Byfield, and physically assessed and discussed the plans with Mr. Damon Jesperson. Part of that assessment was parking vehicles where the new spots would be, and physically ensuring that a marked cruiser had safe and reasonable access around the entire perimeter of the building, including appropriate street access. At this time, I find that the proposed plan does not restrict or hinder emergency police vehicle access to the barns for the street. Patricia Fisher, Chief of Police. And then the letter from the fire chief. Dear Mr. Jesperson, this letter is a follow-up to our conversation and walkthrough yesterday on September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, at One Marsh Meadow Lane regarding emergency vehicle access at the hay barn. The fire department had ladder eight and tanker two attempt to assess, to access the existing driveways, one and three. So Damon, one's at the bottom, right?
Yes, this is, for the purpose of discussion, we call this one, this two, and this three, even though this one wraps all the way around the building continuously, just so that we could have clear notes and guidance on what to do.
Okay, so attempted to access the existing driveways, number one and three, and had problems maneuvering through due to the granite boulders and fencing at both access points. Driveway number three also had three heavy-duty poles inhibiting easy access, which made turning in from the main driveway difficult. By removing the boulders on both sides of driveway one and leveling the ground on the right side, it would make access much easier for emergency vehicles. Driveway number three, we discussed altering the fence on the left of the driveway, move it back at an angle towards the barn, and removing two of the poles on the right side of the driveway. Once through the access points, number one and three, both apparatuses were able to drive around the barn. But we voiced concerns regarding the granite wall in the back, which could be a problem in bad weather for access egress of emergency vehicles. We also asked if the access road was engineered for heavy equipment. We recommend that the rock wall in the back be removed or pushed back to allow for easier access around the barn. Driveway number two, in the middle from the main driveway, we discussed removing the first length of fencing and the granite boulders on the left side. We recommend leaving the boulders on the right side due to the drainage system they are protecting. Thank you for taking the time and including the fire department in the walkthrough and allowing us to talk through our safety concerns regarding the project. As I stated in our conversation, safety is our main concern when responding to any type of emergency. With the recommendations and requests to remove boulders and fencing around the driveways, these will allow for better and quicker access in case of an emergency at this location. Thank you, and we look forward to working with you and your family in the future. Respectfully, David Evans, Chief of the Fire Department.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. Now, ask each board member, do they have any questions for the applicant? Larry, you have any questions?
Yeah, I do have a few. Damon, you mentioned a previous event that caused problems on Orchard. What was, what sort of event was that?
That was a craft fair that I put together with my brother and a couple of friends. We invited local artists and we shared stalls in the barn. It was in December, and it was something that we threw together in the hopes of being able to provide a safe space during COVID for people to gather and see art. And it was successful well beyond our anticipation. We had anticipated about two hundred people over the four-hour period, and we had close to eight hundred people. And we were not adequately prepared for the number of vehicles that arrived, which is part of why we've posted the whole end of Marsh Meadow Lane as a no parking area. Because people pulled onto Marsh Meadow, saw that there were cars parked. pulled onto Marsh Meadow, saw that there were cars parked, and then went out and parked on Orchard Street, which is not uh, I believe is not a, an area where people are supposed to park regularly.
So how, how many uh, vehicles were you able to accommodate parking on Marsh Meadow on-site for that event?
Um, I would have to guesstimate, I know we've had well over two hundred for horse shows. Um, but the horse shows, they pull further down and we've used the the paddock on both sides for parking, um. I was both running the event and uh, selling items during that time, so I didn't do a a car count. We did a count of how many people came through, which is how we know how many people there were there, but we did not do a vehicle count at that time.
I, I guess what I'm trying to get at, maybe I should address it more directly. It looks like you're adding, what, uh, thirty-four event parking spaces and is it six regular parking spaces and two handicapped?
Yep.
So forty additional, is that forty additional spaces or are you simply moving them from one, one area to another?
Um, well, the sixth space, the additional, uh, most of the parking that we're trying to do is uh, sort of like what is done over at Spencer Pierce, which is on grass parking. Um, so what we're trying not to do is disturb a lot of ground and create permanent parking that will be used a couple of times a year. Um, so I'm not a, I don't feel like I'm answering your question, but the, the parking spots around the barn are kind of existent because we've been using the structure for years and years and years. Um, what we have done in the hopes of being able to host events is created and designated these spots um, to show that they exist and they can be used. And I think that we have more than enough capability uh, further down Marsh Meadow Lane, should we decide to have a, a large event to do the on grass parking that uh, would allow us to do more cars, but we're limited in the number of uh, occupants we can have in the barn. And so thirty-five seemed like sufficient number of vehicles for any event that we could host with the current setup of the structure.
What is the occupancy, uh?
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine for the barn? And, and I, I guess again, what I'm trying to back into here is uh, uh, is, is just, is this additional parking going to be enough to take the pressure off of Orchard Street?
I believe it is. Um, like I said, we have eliminated any parking near Orchard Street, so the people are coming all the way onto the property before they begin the parking process. Um, so I feel like if we go, Kristen, can we pull back up the larger map? So right now, we show a parking here and there as part of the overflow parking. But we have parked on this piece of property right here.
So Damon, just sorry, it's just my cursor that people can see, I think, so I'm not sure. Um, if you want to tell me where to point.
So if you come down to the barn section, uh, this area between the circle that is sort of a light greenish color and is directly across from the um.
Oh, down here?
Yep. So if you go towards the bottom of the screen, sorry, yep. Uh, not that far down. So there's sort of a light green patch that is moving to the south of the circle right now. That whole area contained sort of by those white patches, the circle and the road, we have used for parking in the past as on grass parking. And then we have more considerably more parking capability at the horse farm than is shown on the plans. Uh, the engineer said, well, these are, you know, you have way more parking. I'll just put in the thirty-five you need for the regulation. So the, as I said, during horse shows in the past, we've had well over two hundred people parked there, two hundred vehicles parked there, including horse trailers, some of which are uh, eighteen horse trailers. So the capacity of the property to hold the parking is far in excess of what the building can hold.
Okay, good, thank you. Um, Damon, I, I take it from your earlier remarks, you're, you're okay with the fire department's recommendations?
Yes, I sent some pictures to Chief Evans and uh, Kristen Grubbs today showing the removal of the stones and the fence and the two poles. I've not reset the, the last, the fence that they asked to be angled, but everything else I have uh, already accomplished.
Okay, I just got one or two more quick questions. Uh, I, I see that uh, in the narrative that, that you're intending to use porta potties, but there's also a septic system shown on the plan. Is that uh, still your intention to use the porta potties?
Yes, so as we start off, uh, we're not expecting to be overly active. We're still three seasons. There's no heat in the barn. Um, we have to prove the sort of viability of the space and the concept before uh, we'll be allowed to essentially make improvements or upgrades. So the idea of eventually, I would love to bring water to the building, have a bathroom, all of those things, but at present it's just a barn that we uh, are drying garlic in and storing hay in, so that is the foreseeable plan for the next couple of years would be to provide bathrooms during porta potties during events or classes.
And the board of health is okay with that?
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, thank you, Woody. I don't have any further questions right now.
All right, thank you, Larry. Um, Mary, do you have any questions?
It's up for me.
No, Mary.
Oh. Mary's on mute.
Mary, you're muted.
This is for Damon.
Yes.
Damon, I just wondered how much, how many people can be accommodated safely in the barn? And if you've said it before, I apologize.
And our occupancy is set at ninety-nine. Should we ever wish to do anything more than that, we would have to sprinkle the building.
Okay. Okay, ninety-nine, wow, okay. It's a small venue, per se.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mary, you're all set.
I am, I just, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Woody. Uh, Damon, one last thing. Do you have any plans to expand the capacity should things take off in a direction you're happy with?
At present, no. I mean, I feel like ninety-nine people is, I've never had ninety-nine people in the barn. I feel like that would be pretty tight. Um, again, that would be many steps down the road where we you know, would first have to bring water to the building, then put in a septic and then potentially sprinkle the building if we ever thought that was the way to go.
Sure. Okay.
I know that they did it in Topsfield, um, that barn in the center of town there sprinkled.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I don't, I don't particularly like the idea and I don't see it as being necessary uh, for anything that I'm envisioning right now.
Okay, just, just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Mary. Um, Scott, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions that um, Larry asked already, um, about the uh, the fire and the police department. Sounds like um, um, you, you already made uh, some adjustments. You got a little bit more work to, to do uh, even prior to getting uh, an approval, which is uh, you know, um, it's uh, it's nice that you've done that. Um, uh, I think my, my other question would be, just interesting or interested in, by the way, I had a chance to drive through the property today. Um, it's lovely back there. Um, and uh, um, so the barn looks like uh, uh, it's a great space, so um, um, what a fabulous par- property you have. Um, but um, I guess my, my question would be, uh, with respect to your events, um, you know, what, um, how late do they go? I mean, do they, do they end at uh, five or do they, do they end at dusk or uh, they typically during the three seasons where, um, you know, you don't need um, uh, heat? Um, what's the, what's the story there, Damon?
So the, the current plan is for daytime operations. And so that varies, as you know, pretty wildly. Daytime stops at about four in uh, January. But goes uh, till about eight o'clock in the middle of the summer. Um, but so yeah, the question is what, what are the, when are the events going to be? They would be daytime. We don't have the sort of facility, nor do we intend to, where you could, I don't want to put a bunch of uh, street lamps up and have a big parking lot that people could safely walk to and from the barn. So it's, my intention is never to have large capacity events at night because I, I don't think we could do it safely and I don't want to endanger the property having someone walking around in the dark.
Okay, so you haven't, it's, it's during the day, you don't intend to, you know, have uh, anything other than during the day. Um, so if there are concerns by a butters, you know, with um, significantly more traffic uh, through the property during the evening or nighttime hours with headlights, um, that wouldn't be anything more, I guess, uh, than how it exists today.
Not at present. I mean, I can't promise that, you know, fifty years from now it won't be different, but for the time being, the people who are going to access that building at night will be the family when we're using it for farm purposes.
Mm-hmm, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I was just gonna thank him for the compliments about the barn. I think it's a beautiful area, too.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Scott. Um, Steve, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. I had a few, uh, some of which Larry and Scott have touched upon. But uh, let me start by going backwards, I guess, by saying I'll be interested in hearing what the public has to say as well. And that might inspire some more questioning on our part as well. Um, with the traffic, I found myself trying to resolve, um, the thirty-four new spaces versus your narrative, which discusses how for some events you might have uh, a hundred vehicles coming in. And to me, that seems to be something that needs more elaboration. Um, in addition to what you already said to Larry. And again, it sounds to me like it could be creating something that needs further discussion or elaboration. Um, some of my other comments go back to um, down the road, in that when I read the narrative uh, at the very beginning, we mentioned um, all the activities that might occur. I found myself thinking, well, the way the narrative was phrased, you said that, for instance, as you just said with Scott, lighting wasn't going to be an issue because you anticipated daytime activities only at this time. But what might be down the road is to be determined. Uh, now, down the road could be a year from now or fifty years from now, as you said. And I think that um, nighttime lighting or lighting at night and how late it can be would be an important issue for the board to consider and perhaps for you to elaborate on a bit more. Um, by the way, you can interrupt me at any time, but I'm really not trying to get you to, you know, give definitive answers at the moment, Damon. Just to let you know what I'm thinking about. Um, so too with the nature of events, uh, I believe you mentioned music in your narrative and that gets to music and how far the sound will carry, whether it be daytime or some future nighttime. And that might be something that would be a concern to the butters. Um, you also mentioned a circus in your narrative. That caught my eye, too. Whether we're going to see, you know, bleeding elephants or gymnastics being done. But again, what that goes to is how the narrative is rather open-ended about what might be happening down the road. And I think we might anticipate some discussion about whether things need to be constrained in the beginning with perhaps opening it up as time goes by and we uh, learn some stuff. Likewise, uh, it was mentioned of the porta potties and water and sewer and sprinkling the building and that sort of thing. And what caught my eye again, looping back to your uh, narrative, is you mentioned some um, cooking-related activities. And to me, activities that involve food prep and that sort of thing might argue for more than porta potties and a uh, and whatever water supply you're envisioning with the facility.
Can I stop you and, and answer some of these, Steve?
Surely.
Okay, so part of the open-endedness is on the advice of legal counsel. They said that you should include everything you can possibly imagine ever wanting to do. Because if you don't, then you once you've left it out, it's out forever. Now, anything like a food preparation, any person, like if we do a, a catered event, they have to get the license, they have to get their approval through the board of health, same with a food truck, any of those sorts of things. You know, I was talking to Zach, one of the neighbors, because of his concerns, and I said, you know, if we ever did a, wanted to do a wedding ceremony in the space, it would require a special permit. We'd have to come back before the town. The same with, if we change the parking again so that we could do a nighttime event, we'd be back before the planning board because we would, I think quite rightly, be required to have lights in, at the parking spaces, lighted walkways, all of those sorts of things would be required at that point. It's not in my vision at this point, but I'm also not gonna lie and say that can never happen. You know, I'm not a politician anymore because I kept telling people the truth and they fired me. Um, I'm not gonna pretend that I know what's gonna happen with this organization. You know, I don't even know if we'll be going in four years. But I, I have a dream. I would love for this to be a successful thing. You know, would I potentially love to see music in there? You know, a couple of times a year, a few nights? Sure, that would be great. Will it ever justify the expense of putting in more parking and having lights? Maybe not. You know, I just don't know, but I'm not gonna say, you know, I'm not gonna lie to my neighbors and say, there will never be music there. Maybe there will. You know, I can hear the music from Triton when the band is practicing. Is there a disruption? Certainly. Do I also live on this property and want, you know, heavy metal concerts going down at the end of my road? No. Um, so there's a lot of there's a lot of potential. It's a beautiful spot and I don't want to limit the potential. But anytime we do anything that's a change from what we've said here, requires us to come back to either the health board, the planning board, the selectmen for a special permit. You know, there's no, we have certain things we can do as a right. We can teach classes, we can host events, but we can't violate town laws. Uh, which is, I think, a lot of the concern that it's going to become a concert venue. It's not. It's not in my interest. I don't think it would serve the community very well. It's not in my interest. I don't think it would serve the community very well. And it's not, does not agree with the mission of the, of Whiffle Tree. So you know, if EJ Olet teaches classes and wants to do a barn dance there sometime, that matches our mission. You know, he's a local artist. He has local students. A barn dance is in keeping with the character and nature of the structure and its history. You know, Metallica comes to town. I like Metallica. They're not playing in my barn.
Damon, I appreciate that. And again, I, my main goal of putting that out was simply to put it out there for you to hear what at least was on my mind, and I appreciate your response. And maybe there will be some square dancing in the barn sometime. For ninety-nine people. With that, I'm done for now, Woody.
All right, thank you, Steve. Thanks for the reply, Damon. Okay, Kristen, do we have any written submissions of public comment?
Yes, there were two letters received. I don't know if I'm happy to read them or if the authors of the letter are on the call. Maybe it's, maybe it's worth asking. Sit in the dark.
Well, you might as well read them into the record, Kristen, if you don't mind.
Okay. So this letter was received, written to the planning board, received on September tenth. Attention to the planning director and the planning board members. I'm writing to the planning board as one of the residents of Maple Street in Byfield, Mass. I want to bring a few concerns to the planning board members' attention for the upcoming hearing on September eighteenth. Regarding Whiffle Tree Works, I have great concerns over the traffic flow from Whiffle Tree Works events. Please take into consideration that Maple Street is not a public road. Please refer to the select board meeting dated February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Town administrator and town council for more information. As you pull out of Marsh Meadow Lane, Maple Street is straight across Orchard Street. Maple Street is a narrow dirt road maintained privately. The width of the road leaves access for emergency vehicles with no parking anywhere on the road. The width also makes it hard for two vehicles to pass each other. I hope would be that the board could visit the site. There is concern for the overflow of traffic waiting to attend Whiffle Tree Works events. This traffic would have an impact on the whole neighborhood. In the past, traffic circled around using Middle Maple and Orchard Street while waiting to attend the event. Cars lined Orchard and Maple Street parking and moving around the block made it impossible at times for homeowners to come and go. Being that Maple Street is not a public road, there is great concern for the use of the street as an ingress or egress for Whiffle Tree Works events. Sincerely, Gil Meserve. I believe she said Maple Street. I don't have that written on the letter right here. Second letter received this afternoon. Hello, I am in a butter at seventeen Austin Lane and our homes face the Jetsperson Barn. We, along with our neighbors, have serious concerns in regards to the parking to be allowed at that property. In the application, it says that parking would cause minimal impact because there is lush vegetation blocking our views. That is simply incorrect. We have clear views of the parking, so much so that a single car with headlights can shine into our home. I am attaching this concerning image as a reference. This will surely cause a lot of issues with neighborhood and resident complaints, especially since we signed to buy our home under the legal premises of agriculture, agricultural residential zoning whereby this would be setting a new precedent in motion for nonprofit applications in residential areas. Also, noise at night can be clearly heard inside our homes whenever an event is held there. This causes major concerns for our sleeping children or to enjoy quiet evenings in our backyard. Thank you for your attention to this matter, Zach Uremian. I apologize if I didn't say either name correctly.
Okay, thank you for reading the public written comments. Into the record. All right, now we'll go to the public. Do we have any raised hands this evening? Does anyone see any raised hands?
Yes, they're, they're just popping in. So I'll just, Woody, would you like me to just take them in the order? They're on the list here.
Yes, if you can see them, it's easier for you to see them.
Sure. The top hand is Andrew Semuels.
Hi, how you doing?
Could you just make sure to state your address for the minutes, please?
Yep.
Thanks.
All right, so my address is twenty-two Orchard Street, so I'm a direct butter of Maple Street. I just had a couple of questions. I did not receive or have not written, read the mission statement, so I just wanted to hear more about like what kind of educating is going to be going on at the farm? Is it kids? Is it adults? Like, it seems very, very open-ended and everything that's been said tonight has not really done anything to dissuade that open-endedness. And it kind of feels like this is a way to get the parking and then expand in the future if, you know, as Damon said, if he decides to do it that way, or if it feels right, or if things are working well. The second thing is when there was all the cars on Orchard Street, Damon said that he was busy running the event and there was no one monitoring the parking. And I want to know who's going to be policing that in future events. Who's going to be making sure that people are pulling into the right spots? People are not backed onto Orchard or any of the surrounding areas?
Would you like to respond to that, Woody?
Yes, would you like to respond to that, Steve?
Yes, we plan to have classes for both kids and adults. And the parking issue, as I said, we were caught off guard. We'd asked for RSVPs. We doubled the amount of people we anticipated from the RSVPs and we got four times that number. I've talked with Patty and both, and Chief Evans. Should we plan another event? We'll be doing it in coordination with the police. We'll have a police detail. We'll have more people who are, we had one person parking cars because we thought that was sufficient. We have since learned our lesson. You know, it's a having wild success once does not mean that we'll ever have that many people try to attend an event again, but we would like it.
Can I just ask a quick follow-up question? Are the events going to be then just open events where anyone can show up or are they, because you've mentioned classes? And for me, as an educator, I would think classes, you like people sign up for a class and you know how many people are coming. But is, are they going to be open events where it's like, okay, here's the thing that's happening? You know, we're hoping this many people show up, but whoops, if this many people show up because they're real excited about it, now we're scrambling to figure out what to do.
The classes would be structured as, as most are with a cap of, you know, depending on the class, twelve people. So for a class, it's not an open invitation. The the event that caused the issue was a craft fair. That's a, a publicized event. And so, yes, for something like that, it's open-ended, but we know now that we need to give more time and do more planning about the parking. I think you know, if you are starting a new thing and you don't make a mistake, I'd be amazed. Beating me up for the parking on an event that happened three, four years ago? You guys can be worried about it, but no one was happy about it and we've taken steps to make it better. So I don't know what else you want me to say about that. We've we believe, as do the police chief and the fire chief, that we can keep the cars contained and off of Orchard Street.
I just, you know, I'm not trying to beat you up about it, but I also don't really think you've come up with a clear plan. And I don't think I've heard once this entire time you mentioned any concern for anyone except yourself in your dream. And we're all happy that you have a dream. We also bought homes in this area. We like live in this area because it's peaceful and it's quiet. And, you know, I don't think it's fair for your dream and whatever your dream turns into in the next five, ten, fifteen years to adversely affect tons of people that paid a lot of money to live in this neighborhood and pay taxes and live in this town. And that's all I got to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Andrew. Kristen, who's next on the list?
Sorry, Channing Howard.
Hey, Channing, would you state your name and address for the record and ask a question, please? You're muted, Channing.
Channing Howard, sixty-one Central Street, Byfield. And I am the chairman of the Historic Commission at the same time. The question is for you, the chair. Has the building restriction agreement on the property for said lot six been addressed about its restrictions for the structure, the landscape, and everything, everything on lot six?
I honestly, could you repeat the question, please, Channing? Is that directed to me?
Yes, yes. I was not part and parcel of the first meeting. Has the building restriction agreement on this lot, which is lot six, and its appendix been addressed by your board? You're the board that holds this agreement in relation to the structures and the landscape and the premises, quote unquote.
I'm unaware of any restrictions. Kristen, do you know of any restrictions on the barn?
I, so there is a historic restriction. I, I would welcome Channing to, if you have it in front of you. I don't have it in front of me. But my understanding is there are no proposed changes to the building. So I don't, I can't answer if there is or is not relevance to the restriction, but happy to talk about it.
Okay, well, the restriction was written when this property was broken up in nineteen seventy-six. And the restriction not only includes the buildings, but the property, the landscape, fences and stone walls. And any alterations do need to follow the Secretary of Interior standard for treatment of historic properties, including treatment of cultural landscapes. So.
So my understanding is the planning board did review the renovations to the barn in more recent years. So again, I'm assuming that the current conditions are in aligned with what the restrictions say, but just, yeah, appreciate it being raised. And if, you know, the planning boards can consider that as they review this project.
Any other questions, Channing? No. All right, thank you. Who's next on the list, Kristen?
Thomas Collins.
All right, Thomas Collins, please state your name and address for the record. And what is your question, sir?
Yes, Thomas Collins, fifteen Austin Lane, a director butter. I have a question and then my wife Laurie has a question also. So my question is, looking at the layout of the parking spaces that are proposed, what is the actual material going to be used? Is it going to be asphalt? Is it going to be some sort of a stone dust? Or is it just simply going to be lines in grass?
Damon.
Parking, the only parking that is going to be stone dust is for the handicap parking spots, which have certain standards that have to be adhered to. All other parking will be as done both at Cedar in the Open and Spencer Pierce and the other nonprofits in the area that park on grass.
And has there been any drainage studies done due to the impact of parking in those areas?
No, I don't believe that parking on the grass will change the drainage.
And that's that question. I said, have there been any studies done?
The answer to the question is no.
Thank you. I'd like that noted. Thank you. I'm going to pass this to my wife, Laurie, now.
Hi. I just want to say that we have some concerns about the scope of the project. In a previous meeting, the applicant's lawyer actually said if this is passed, neighbors' concerns don't apply. I would really love an explanation of that. And my other question is, I work for the town of Ipswich and every two years we have to take an ethics test. We had town employees do, elected employees do, even appointed employees do. And it's very specific. I see that someone from the board has already recused themselves. But for people who have personal and business relationships with the applicant, they really should review that ethics exam and see if it applies to anyone else. Thanks.
Okay, Damon, would you like to reply to Laurie's question?
I don't recall the comment that she is referencing, but I think what it is, is the nature of the as-of rights for a five oh one C three. There are certain things that are guaranteed by right, and I think that's what she's referring to. I'm not sure.
Thank you. The next person on the list, please, Kristen?
Yeah, Alyssa Rice.
Okay, please state your name and address for the record. Please ask your question.
Hi, this is Alyssa Rice. I am at seven R Austin Lane. I just have some questions, maybe make some statements. I not only live at Austin Lane, but I am a customer at the Evenstride Horse Facility. So I can personally attest that in the past five years, there has not been more than two hundred cars or even close to that amount at any of the home horse shows in the past five years. Just going on record of that. That being said, it's an agricultural area. I have a ten-year-old daughter who rides her pony up and down that street. Now, if there's an event during the day with cars parked on both sides, there are no curbs, so you have your pedestrians walking in the middle of the street. Has anyone thought about the safety of both the pedestrians and the people that are there with, you know, as of right agricultural use? Do you want me to keep going or should we pause?
Please finish with
Sure.
Your statement. Thank you.
No worries. And you know, Damon and I understand that you can't predict the future and what is going to happen with the barn and the events. I do remember quite clearly, as I'm sure a lot of my neighbors who attended the initial application two years ago in person at the the town meeting and someone, your original proposal was to go in for a zoning change. And someone on the board had said, well, if you just come in as a nonprofit, you know, this, this is more likely to go through. And at that time, you said the farm needs to sustain itself. That is, I believe you said not a possibility or not an option, or it wouldn't work. So apparently we've shifted a little now. And I, I'm very concerned with the, I understand night events. The, I understand night events or day events. But is there any way that we can limit hours for this barn? I know there was a. A celebration or remembrance, I think it was in the fall, and there was a band playing. And I am not a director butter. I am, my, we have a lot of land that actually directly borders part of this parcel. Um, not this parcel here, but other parcels there, and my house was shaking. From the noise level. So, you know, and that was, I think, nine o'clock at night, ten o'clock at night. So is there any way that, you know, moving this forward, we can put some restrictions on, you know, times or allowable hours for events? I mean, I personally don't have any problems with craft fairs if parking is managed correctly. Um, you know, I'm not gonna crucify Damon for something that happened a couple of years ago that, you know, he's, he's come to the plate and recognized it was a bad situation all around. And, you know, trying to find ways to remedy it, but I'm more concerned that as the other neighbors, that we bought this house, we bought, we paid a lot of money for these homes in this neighborhood. To have a piece, you know, and I don't wanna be up at nine thirty at night listening to, you know, bands playing. That's, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Alyssa. Your, uh, comments will be noted by the board. Um, and taken into, into consideration, definitely. Um, is there?
Woody, can I say something really quickly?
Yes, go right ahead.
It just, it, it occurs to me, I see all the raised hands and, uh, I'm listening to the comments. Um, I, does it? Does it seem to anyone else that there are a lot of unanswered questions that may be going back to some kind of a. Uh, starting point with some kind of a plan, uh, with some of these gaps filled in. Might make more sense for, for a public meeting. And, you know, right now, everything's just like fair game. And it, there's nothing there. There's not a there, there is a great idea, a great concept, um. And a great venue, but the venue has its problems and, and also there's, there's not an objective, um. Uh, short-term or long-term plan, as I see it, just to make, not that it can't change, but. Just to make people feel safe with where this is heading right now or for the next whatever many years. Um, and I think Mr. Samuels, uh, said it nicely, was just, there are a lot of unanswered questions. That maybe, uh, a, a public hearing can't approach right now because there's just too much that hasn't been decided.
If I may, Woody?
Yes, go right ahead. I was just gonna say, would you like to speak to that, Damon?
This is a discussion of the parking. The as-of-rights for the use of the property is determined and set by law. It's not the discussion. We are here to discuss the parking. What we do on the property. Is determined by other laws. That's not tonight's topic. It's not what the hearing is about. This is not setting the hours of operation. None of that is part of this discussion. This is a parking hearing. You know, I'm happy to discuss whether or not walking on the property makes sense during events. It is, as a. I've had it explained to me, we have a fee interest on the road, so we can close the road during an event if we don't want people walking on it. You know, the horse farm is part of my family's operation. The reason, the. Reason we started with the zoning change is it was my understanding from the town lawyer that that gave. The cleanest and best approach. It has always been my idea to start a non-for-profit for the property. That's what we're doing. The. Town does not have noise ordinances. It was something I tried to push through as a selectman. It's something you could go to the selectman again for. Again, I s- as I've stated earlier, if we have an event, such as a music event. It requires a special permit, and at that time, that is when we would set the hours. We can set decibel levels. All of that will be determined event by event. You know, when does a wedding have to shut down? I know many of my neighbors have had parties. I can hear them. People have weddings in their backyards. You know. I think you guys are trying to hold me, A, to standards that are not pertinent to this hearing, and B, that are not. Pertinent to the scope of what I've described doing. Anytime we leave the scope that is described, we need to go back for a special permit.
Okay, thank you, Damon. Um, Kristen, is there any more raised hands?
Um. There are, and I just, I just, I guess, wanna say that there is. There are site plan review regulations, and that's what the planning board is using to review this project. So, um, it's available for everyone to look at the things that can be considered in this site plan review. Um, and that's, uh, just objective information, um. It's not, there's not a subjective, uh. Randomness around this process, so I just wanted to make that comment. Um, the next hand is Ryan Small.
Yes, Ryan, please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, Ryan Small, um, at nineteen Austin Lane, direct a butter to the barn. Um, I just wanted to say thank you for your time tonight. Um, also, you know, I might as well throw it out there, thank you to Damon. I, I heard he met with Zach Jeremy and my next-door neighbor recently, so. Um, that was nice to hear. I know when we've approached this conversation before. Uh, one of our concerns was that we hadn't had any communication or didn't seem like they wanted to reach out to us on, you know, the butter side of things, so. I do appreciate that. Um, given what we had said about, you know, this being more of a parking conversation. I will just say that I echo all of my neighbors when it comes to all of the concerns about the vagueness of. How deep this, um, entertainment can go or, um, which directions it can go in, which times of the day it can go in. So I understand that that will be held at special permit events, which is nice to hear, because that was one of my biggest concerns. Um, but, you know, just remember, I bought this house in twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty, yeah, twenty twenty-one, almost three years now on Halloween. Um, you know, when I walked into the backyard, it was beautiful, serene, quiet. Looking out at the barn, I love the barn, it's beautiful. I love the idea of, you know, certain events. I respect art, I love music, like. I, I get, I get all of the situation, but for me, as everyone said, I spent a lot of money on the house. Uh, it's my safe space, it's my, my everything, it's my dream home, and I have two little kids. I have a three-year-old and a seven-year-old, um, that I just put to bed cheer, you know, after cheerleading practice for Triton and. Um, you know, they go out in that backyard every day, and one of my favorite things is that I now, I used to live in Peabody. And I didn't really have the safest neighborhood, but I now have a neighborhood that my kids can go in their backyard and run around. And I can see them out the kitchen window, I can see them out the dining room window. We have a trampoline, we have a zip line. All of this is within feet of that rock wall. Which, granted, right now you can't see too much of the barn property because of the growth, but in the winter. You can see everything that, all of the growth, you know, dies down and. So my main concern here with the parking situation, I saw the, you know, the PDF and I saw the red zones on it. And, I mean, that's right up against my house, it's the entire rock wall. And I'm afraid that, you know, we're gonna be inviting basically people from anywhere all over the place to come in. I understand to enjoy the barn, the property, I, I get it, but for me, just think about where I'm coming from. Now I have to worry about my three-year-old and my seven-year-old, um, you know. Uh, any sort of awful situation you can imagine with someone from the public that I'm not, you know, comfortable with or know or have anything to do with. Now all of a sudden, they're gonna be in my, up against my backyard. Who knows how often or for how long? Um, you know, and, and now I'm, I'm starting to have fears about my, my kids just having a safe place to play, you know. My daughter can walk over the, my three-year-old can walk over the rock wall if she wanted to, it's no problem, it's not like it's, you know. Uh, a barrier, so what I'm basically saying is there's a real ease of access for the public to get into my yard or to, you know. Talk to my children right over the wall, and that would be my main concern right now with the parking situation. Um, you know, my kids aren't growing up anytime soon, and they're gonna be spending a lot of those developmental years out there in the backyard, so. Um, if this is strictly a parking conversation, I will keep it to that, but, um, thank you all for your time.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Yes, yes, Larry.
Woody, do you mind if I jump in for a second?
Yes, go right ahead, please.
Here, I, there, there's, I think there's a lot of confusion, understandably, a lot of confusion over procedurally what we're doing here. Um, the last series of hearings were before the select board. Uh, what was that, a year and a half ago, Damon, two years ago, something like that? Um, when, uh, Damon applied for a special permit. Or, and I believe it was an entertainment license, but whatever it was, I, I don't recall. Special permit is, is a, is a very. Distinct, different type of proceeding than what we're dealing with here tonight, okay? And that was eventually withdrawn. It re- and special permit requires a four-fifths vote from the special permit granting authority, which would have been the select board. At that time, Damon withdrew that, and now what he's done is he formed a charitable corporation. Okay, by Massachusetts law, uh, we can't limit the activities of a charitable corporation, okay? But as, as he proposes each of these different activities, it would ultimately be the, uh, building commissioner. Would make the call, the building commissioner is the enforcing authority to determine if any particular activity. Is considered educational or charitable or something else. I wouldn't consider, um, a, a wedding reception, for example, to fall into the category of charitable or educational. Um. We cannot prohibit a charitable or educational use of this property. Under site plan review, what we can do is put reasonable, um, limitations on it. To, um, uh, to protect a whole host of, of, uh, values that are set out in the. Um, yeah, in, in our bylaw, and at some point, we will have to go through all of those. I will disagree with Damon. This is more than about parking. Okay, it's about addressing all of the concerns that are set out in the site plan rev- review bylaw. And that would include, in our, in my opinion, things like limitations of hours of operation or protections against, um. Uh, overburdening parking on, uh, or, or traffic on Orchard or Maple. So, again, keep in mind what we're here to do. We're not here to tell him he can do this or do that. But what, what we are here to do is to look at what might be reasonable limitations or restrictions on any activities on the property. I hope I haven't made things even more confusing for everyone, but, uh, again, it, it's, um, uh. Educational and charitable, um, activities, um, enjoy special protection under the law. And again, we can't tell them what, what is or is not charitable or educational. That's gonna be up to the building commissioner at the time. So I hope that helps, and I hope I haven't just confused people more.
It does, no, it helps, Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Larry. All right, we'll go back to, uh, list of public comments. Kristen, who do we have next?
Um, I think Helen Marktochio.
Okay, um, Helen, could, you're muted. Could you go unmute yourself and please state your, uh, name and address for the record? Thank you.
Uh, yes, my name is Helen Matocchio. I live at twenty-four Orchard Street by Field. I'm at, I'm in a butter of Marsh Meadow. And I don't want to necessarily repeat a lot of the things that some of my, um, neighbors have said, but, you know, for me, as. Um, as it was when this was proposed a couple of years ago, I feel that. It's very broad in terms of like what needs to be done, and I understand that we're not here to say you can and can't do anything. I just think in terms of making decisions about like hours of operation, different types of regulations, it's so broad, I'm not sure like how you can sit in. And I think that at this point, is there any business plan for what is like the next six months, the next like eighteen months look like? In terms of what the, the business plan is for having classes at the bottom, you know, the, the frequency, the type of classes as well. Um, I also feel that I've lived and worked on a twenty-four Orchard Street for thirty-three years. Um, so I've seen a lot of change in respect to the traffic on the road. And, I mean, I have to agree with, um, one of our neighbors that. At this point, the horse shows really don't, don't create a, a huge issue in terms of traffic. I have to say, there are probably some more respectful drivers on Orchard Street, especially when you have someone with the trailer with their horses. They, they usually drive in a slower pace. And I think that, um, increasing the number of cars that are visiting the neighborhood, um. You know, there's, I walk my dog, I mean, for over thirty years, I've walked a dog on Orchard Street. And there's many a times when it's two cars and me, and I'm, and like, I don't know where I'm supposed to go. And because a lot of the cars don't stop, so I mean, that's my concern, is there's some level of increase to traffic. Um, and I think also cars coming out of, um, you know, um, Marsh Meadow, there's no stop sign there. And if we're going to increase maybe the traffic that's gonna come there, do we have to consider that? I mean, that's really just a public safety item, is just have people consider stopping as opposed to doing the rollout onto Orchard Street. The same thing, I would say, I mean, Maple isn't part of it, but same kind of thing there is that people, you know, just sometimes, um. You know, pull up really fast and don't, you know, consider looking at what's coming and what's to right on the, on the street. So, you know, I guess that's just, uh, I mean, like I said, a lot of people have stated a lot of things, but my concern is that there's a. Uh, you know, I, I, I don't necessarily disapprove with the wanting to have classes and so forth, I just, it's more just like understanding. Um, there's, I, I feel like I read the application for the nonprofit, I read the narrative of what's expected, they're kind of different. And I, you know, I get maybe the, you know, you're guided to like create something very broad for the nonprofit, but I just think that. So is someone to ask questions. I do think it's opening it up for a lot of. I don't know how you, I don't know how you put boundaries around that with respect to like, you know, the types of hours of use. And like the number of people with certain things, and how do you manage crowd control and so, so forth, so. Um, that's just my, you know, my comment, is that, it's just, I think there needs to be more definition. And maybe understanding what a business plan looks like for the next x, x period of time would be helpful.
Okay, thank you, Helen, for your comment.
Do you want me to respond, Woody, or?
If you, if you would like to respond, go ahead, Damon, otherwise we'll move on to the next question.
Um, I'd be happy to put a stop sign at the end of Marsh Meadow Lane. Uh, if the planning board thinks it's a good idea. Um, as far as the business plan goes, we are in limbo right now. Uh, because we need certain steps to be done before we can start to. Actually make plans, you know, we can't schedule a class right now. Because we can't park people at the property, so we're moving into winter. I don't believe anything is gonna happen at this point before winter. Um, you know, since we were planning daytime use, I didn't put in hours of operation because. A, I forgot to ask the lawyer. If we do hours of operation, is it actually going to affect how the family can use the property? On hours when the, the wiffle tree is not using the property, because. You know, I go to the barn sometimes late at night, because I have to bring an animal, something from an animal or bring, you know, it's when I can do the work. Um, but, you know, we could do whatever makes, if it's easier to do. Hours of operation are six to nine, or whatever, you know, we decide, that's fine. You know, we won't be using it after dark, but I think that seems like something that would make people more comfortable, and so. That's a discussion I'm perfectly happy to have.
Right, that's, my fault, I was just real quick. I, I still like, I understand that you're still going through the process of trying to. Um, make changes regarding what the fire department's asked to do and so forth, but. I also think in the future and ahead, you must have some kind of a plan that's to, you must have potentially. Um, instructors lined up or interested, and so I, I just think that, um, well, I mean, but you say no, but I mean, the person behind you, but the thing is, is that. I don't know, there's got, to me, there has to be, there's, it just is, you should, I mean, helping, I think having a plan just makes sense. Um, and starting to have a plan, work to the pool's plan is, as opposed to just gonna have X classes and this, and then also explain the types of classes. I just think, but that's, 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 I guess that's, I think in terms of business planning, but just. It's, you know, you have to, um, come up with something to start with, you know, forecasting. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Helen. Um, Kristen, who's?
Yeah, uh, next is Jane O'Keefe.
Hi, I'm Jane O'Keefe, I'm at eleven Maple Street, uh, which is directly across.
Uh, which is directly across the street from Marsh Meadow Lane and on the corner of Orchard as well. Um, and I agree with everything that Helen said, of course, um, but I also have, um, sticking to the parking really because I think that you know, that's what we're talking about tonight, and one of the things that, even though the, the show that we had, the, the craft fair that we had was lot larger than you expected, Damon, the, the traffic was horrendous um, on my road, which is a private road, as you know. Um, but my husband and I couldn't even get up and down our street, and um, Orchard Street was a disaster, we had um, you know, uh, Ryan Kelly out there, um, directing traffic, which there was no police presence there, and, and that's fine, that was one time only, but my concern is that if people come to your events and they say, oh, I'm not gonna go down there cuz I'll probably get stuck down there, I'm just gonna park here on Maple Street. How are we gonna police that? How are we gonna police people parking on Orchard Street in front of Helen's house? Um, or my road down my street, which doesn't allow for two cars to even stay in one place, you know, it has, it has to be constantly moving, and it is a private road. How are we gonna stop people just parking there? And is somebody gonna tow them? Um, what, what are we gonna do about people that just decide to park their car there and walk over to your facility?
Uh, we've, when I was talking to Patty, she said that she thought the approach that they used on Scotland Road and Road for the, for the Sunflower event had been extremely successful, so she had proposed that if we do an event, they would put up temporary no parking signs along Orchard Street, and if you guys are willing, on your private road on Maple. So that no parking occurs off the property, and should people violate it, you know, it will the police will deal with that, so it'll be, I don't know if they'll tow or ticket or how they would propose to handle it, I can't speak for Patty and the, the police. But we, uh, as I said, underestimated the event's uh, appeal, and intend to have a police detail and communication with the police. Trying to do your events.
Okay. Thank you.
The next hand is Zach, um, Yorinian.
Hello, Zach, uh, please state your name and uh, address for the record.
Seventeen Austin Lane, I had written the um, email earlier, I was curious if that image could actually get brought up, uh, Kristen. Is that possible?
Yes, I'll, I'll work on it.
While, while you're looking at that, I guess the um, the other question that I have, um, if we are looking at parking whether it could be uh, parked cars on both sides of the street, there aren't any curbs or sidewalks, and there's going to be pedestrians kind of forced into the street, walking to the events. There's gonna be equestrian activities, so uh, I think that needs to get addressed as well, especially if people are walking up and down the road, um. I've seen horses, people walking, um, so if, if we are looking at just people walking up and down the street, I think there just needs to be some type of uh, safety addressed there, if cars are now driving where people are walking. Um, and then this is the image I wanted to just uh, put on in, on the record and be shared, this is from my house, looking at the property, I know that we, we're talking about daytime only, but should it advance into any type of evening activities, this is only one car headlight. Um, so what we're looking at here, I think, uh, whenever we're looking at the car, the, uh, the cars even at dusk, there is impact into the homes, um, where there's clear view of the abutters, the properties, especially when the leaves start to drop. This is current, um, and so i- i- it definitely does have an impact when we're, we're talking about long term here. Uh, especially if there's uh, uh, looking at more expansion. So, this is, just needs to get put out there for consideration what we're looking at here, um. Granted, we're not talking about nighttime, we're talking about daytime, but wanted to put this and share this image out there for what it looks like for an abutter. And that's everything, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Damon.
Uh, I don't know if everyone realizes, but Evenstride Farms is, is part of my family operation. And so, we will communicate about events and would not have lot of horse activities and a whiffle tree event at the same time. Um, I also, Zach had showed me that picture, and I think it's actually coming from the, our tenants who run Evenstride Farm at the farmhouse. Not the driveway from the way it looks up on the bigger screen, so you know, there's, I understand the concern around lights and things like that, um. But it's also part of the natural use of the property and the house that's right there, you know, if you have neighbors whose driveway, when they pull in, faces your house. You get lights, and as I said, you know, sometimes I have to go to the barn at night. If I drove down there right now cuz I needed to get garlic, you would see the lights, that's I think the, the nature of being neighbors.
Okay, thank you, Damon. Um, Kristen, next, next raised hand, please.
Uh, Jack Rybicki.
Hey, Jack, please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Jack Rybicki, thirty-seven Larkin Road, good evening, everybody. Um, I, I understand the, the right to education and the Dover Amendment, Damon, to use in here, but I'd like to, I'll go right back to what the, what the prior uh, person just brought up, um, and what Larry brought up earlier, is, is this process still that has to be honored. The land was part of a special permit carved up by your family, Damon, it's part of an open space residential development. As part of that open space residential development, when you sign that application, there was a box checked on that. I bring this to the planning board's attention cuz I think they need to review it. And that box said there wouldn't be public use in the property. And as a result of that check box, I think seven to nine waivers were granted to the family, not the least of which was no curving, no sidewalks, and to go back to an earlier commentator, no storm water management studies had to be done, again. Because what the citizens were told and what the planning board was told was there wasn't gonna be big public impact there. That it was a private lane gonna be used for farming purposes only. Clearly, that lies this new pursuit, granted it's by right. It lies in the face of the spirit of the open space residential development, but I think it also kicks into a re-review of what was formally approved by the planning board under the auspices of the OSRD. That if he continues this pursuit, that curbing, sidewalk, the storm water management, and the rest of the programming that would normally be done under the OSRD permitting process should be now enforced with this pursuit. Ahead of any granting of parking whatsoever that we're discussing here. My second point, bringing up Channing's, uh, the, the historical commission. Um, what he read says landscaping including stones can't be touched. And Damon said already, he's moved landscaping and stones. Uh, that, that was just tonight, I'm just repeating what was said, so I think we gotta disconnect there, and if there, if it needs to be properly looked at, again, I, I appeal to the planning board. Lastly, I bring up to everyone, uh, the idea that, that Damon or that Whipple Tree would have to come before the select board for multiple special permits for, say, a band, uh, party or whatnot. I submit to you that Damon could say that that's part of the educational pursuit, that it's a recital in fact. And that he doesn't need a special permit to do it, because it falls under the auspices of education. And I think that should be very concerning for everybody in that neighborhood, because once again, without releasing it ahead, as Damon has already promised us, he's asking for the moon because he doesn't wanna lose anything. When in fact, he's in a residential agriculturally zoned area. Putting it, it, under the Dover Amendment, using the Dover Amendment to push an educational pursuit that seems to be nothing more than um, room rentals for people that wanna have various educational pursuits, the not specific pursuits like the Dover Amendment does. But that's a discussion for another day, those are the three points I'd like the planning board to address and to Damon to address, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack. Uh, Damon, would you like to say anything, or should we move on to the next question?
Well, first off, the application that Jack is referring to is the open space permit, which allowed us to subdivide the property for the house that I built and my brother's subsequent house. The box that was checked and was debated at length is public access. We did not allow free and open public access to the property because of the horse farm. And the planning board decided that that was acceptable at that time. It is not to say that we cannot have the public here, we do on a regular basis. We did not give open public access because we, a butt Martin Burns and people hunting deer and people riding horses are two things we decided we should not encourage in the same location. So the public access was something that we chose to limit as a family and the planning board approved at that time. The stones, which I removed, were placed after the renovation of the wooden barn, they were excess. They were not part of the landscaping, and they were not, possibly, they should not have been put there. Uh, as part of that renovation process. But they are not protected under the rules from that time, I do not believe, and if they had to be put back, I'll put them back.
Good, thank you, Damon, uh. Let's see, who, who do we have next on the list of participants?
No, uh, please, Woody, Woody, please, uh, I, I, I'm asking for the planning board's opinion of whether or not we need to return to the OSRD for what Damon just said. The planning board gave him those waivers because he just told you that you prom, that he promised you there would not be multiple public use in the development, now he's telling you there's going to be multiple public use in the development.
Now what the law's about.
Uh, I'm not, I have the floor, I have the floor.
Excuse me.
I'm asking, the, Woody, it's the OSRD that carved the land, you can return to the application, you can look at it. But you can clearly see what was given as waivers that are now impacting what's going to take place, parking including, he has forty-six parking places on a twenty-two foot wide road with two-way traffic. That adds up to me to be more than twenty-two feet worth of car on the road, let alone no pedestrian or horses on the road, which is what it was allegedly told us it was going to be exclusively. Again, I believe it opens up the door to revisiting the OSRD that you granted cuz he would be in technical violation of what he said wasn't going to happen, by right or not. And I'm asking Larry, your lawyer, I'm asking Kristen, and I'm asking everybody who signed that document, the OSRD, I know you didn't, Kristen, back then. But I'm asking you all that it needs to be taken under advisement before we go forward. I believe it's a legitimate concern, and it's a safety concern, and it absolutely falls under the preview of level two site review and everything we're discussing, his right to hold an educational facility there or not. It is the public use that we're talking about, and it's, that's exactly why we need to revisit the open space residential development process and okays that we gave him back then. Thank you, and I'm asking for your opinion, it's, you know, now, because that's what the public hearing's about, thank you.
Well, we'll take, take your comment and question and consideration, unless Larry has something to say on it, I, I have not.
It's, it's my understanding that both the town council and the building commissioner weighed in on this, and that uh, the OSRD decision does not impact his right to go forward on this.
Somebody asked, right?
Kristen, next person on the list, please.
Um, let's see, Alissa Rice, and let's say uh, is your, I know you spoke earlier, is your hand up again, or did I forget to lower your hand?
Alyssa Rice.
I think, um, I think she spoke earlier, so maybe that's it.
Looks like it.
I think that's all the raised hands, Woody.
Looks like Woody's frozen.
No. Can't even see him.
Yeah, he might have a connection issue. I think we just lost Woody, let's give him a minute to uh, log back on.
So, um, while we're seeing if he can get back on, I did wanna mention, I just communicated with the second agenda item on our, um, on our agenda tonight, which was a presentation about, um, some transportation work that the town's engaged in with Mayor Matt Kelly Planning Commission, but um, I underestimated uh, the timing, I apologize to everyone, and we'll, we'll um, postpone that discussion for another meeting, which is fine, um, I, I will love to have Elizabeth back, um, but she couldn't stay on the meeting this late, so just wanted to share with everyone.
Uh, thanks, Kristen.
Thanks, Kristen, I was wondering about that.
I don't know, let me try to call Woody, just see.
Kristen, do we have to, um, we have to take a vote or something now, not a vote, but you have to decide on something in advance of uh, pulling the plug on this discussion?
Uh, well, let's wait for Woody before we, before we do anything.
I'm sorry, Larry, I, I didn't hear what you just said.
I, I think we should wait for Woody, given that we're in an open.
Oh, no, of course, no, of course, I was just wondering procedurally.
Yeah.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't mean Woody in the dust.
No, we can't do that.
He said he's trying to get on back again, but his connection is, um, tricky.
I know, I've had trouble too.
Oh. Huh. He's just saying, he's sorry, everyone, he's getting like a a weird Zoom message that says it's preparing the meeting, um, so I'm just suggesting he make sure he log all the way out, I don't wanna do anything with hosting the meeting and lose, lose people.
No, we can't take any, any further information or evidence uh, until Woody is back on, because then
It's probably, what's probably happening to Woody is that it's preparing the recording. Because he was, if he started the recording, it's probably we're preparing the recording, and that's why he's getting that message, so this didn't work. We may have to wait a little bit for that to finish.
Hello, I'm sorry about that, I'm back, I had to use another device. Um, what have I, what did I miss, I'm sorry?
Nothing, nothing.
Okay.
We, we just put everything on hold pending getting you back on.
Yeah, I don't, it kicked me out of the meeting, and I'm not sure why, but now I'm on another device. So, as I was saying when I disappeared, um, should we, would, is there any interest in for members of the board to go on a sidewalk here? Can we schedule a sidewalk?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, I think we ought to do two things, Woody, I think we should review, refer this to our, uh, Uh, peer review engineer to take a look at, and that might inform us on any, I don't think that there are any drainage issues or storm water management issues, but. I'm not an engineer and that might better inform us and have him take a look at it, and yes, I, I think a sidewalk would be appropriate.
Yeah, and you, you're saying have Joe look at it, Joe's.
Yeah, I think so.
And I, I agree with you too, um. So, hearing that. It, every, I can't see everyone, so if anyone else. When would you be available for a sidewalk? When should we? When would be a good time for that? Is that something we wanna set now, or do we wanna, um? Figure out. This, the, the end of this week and. Set a date when everyone's available. Kristen, do you have any thoughts on that?
Um, it's really up to the board if there's any, um, you know, it's just. Relevant when it is related to when you continue the public hearing. So the next, um. Plan we're meeting is October second, and then the one after that is October sixteenth. So, you know, if people are around and think we can find a time for the site visit before October second, um. Then you could continue the public hearing till then, or if. I don't know what everybody's schedule is, so you could look at the second meeting in October if needed.
Okay, um. October second, would that give Joe enough time to review this, uh, you'd probably get that into Joe. This week, right? For site plan review? On Joe, uh, peer review on Joe's spot?
Yeah, that's a good point, um. I, that might be a little tight, he's got a lot of projects that he's working on these days, so, um. I'm not sure if he'd be able to get us a response back by then.
Okay. Um. As far as the sidewalk's concerned, when is every, everyone available? Would, uh. Is, is there a? Day this week that people could go for a sidewalk, say, uh? Thursday?
I, I can't do, I can't do tomorrow.
I can't do that either.
All right.
Um, Woody, let me, maybe I suggest, um, maybe I'll suggest if, um. Kristen could, uh. Um, maybe over the next day or two, um, just work the group and determine, you know, what day is best for. Potentially, next week, that might be, um, that might be best.
Okay.
I'm happy to do that, yeah.
Yeah, so. We'll be awaiting email from Kristen, good, we'll please respond so that we can figure out a date to have a sidewalk. Um. All right. That being said, um, that's the applicant, if.
Oh, Woody, a quick question, actually, uh, to pose to Damon. My schedule's a little bit odd, so would you mind if I ended up just taking a drive down? To see the property, which I haven't done, probably stay in the car, but otherwise just drive down to a road that is undiscovered to my mind.
Uh, you, you are welcome to drive on the road. Uh, drive, the driveway around the barn, by all means.
Thank you, though I'll try and work with the planning board as well, but I may, uh, show up in the afternoon sometime. Uh, should I send you an email, or should you just? Trust me to drive around.
Um, I trust you to drive around, if you're gonna get out and walk around, please let me know, so I can let. The other residents know that you're on the property, so they don't. Get concerned about. A strange man walking around.
Certainly, thank you.
Right, thank you. Um. So, we'll. Sidewalk to be determined. Um, we'll get the information to Joe for. Or re- review. Um, Kristen, you felt that it, we didn't have, uh, time. To. Uh, in the next two weeks for a response from Joe. So. Um. We could reschedule this public hearing for two meetings from now, what would the date be on that?
Yeah, I just, I just can't speak for Joe either way, I, I like to think he could, but, um, maybe to be safe. The second meeting in October is the sixteenth.
And, um. I guess specifically. What is Joe, um, reviewing, is he? Looking at the, uh, proposed parking, determining whether or not we need, um, you know, any. Um, you know, drainage or swelling or, you know, whatever, um, might be, uh. Um, you know, necessary. Just trying to, um.
Yes.
Just get around your own scope of, of Joe's, um, review.
Yeah, he'd be, he'd be looking at the pocket plan that Damon's presented, and. There was an additional, uh, gravel that. Stretch on that road, so a review from Joe. And he could, he'd do a peer review and get back to it.
Those are, what you said are the things he does peer review for on behalf of the projects, yes, drainage. Um, and any other storm water impact.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to, uh, continue this public hearing to. October sixteenth.
So moved.
At seven fifteen.
Be a zone.
Be a zoom, yes. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Uh, roll call vote, Larry?
Yes.
Um, Mary?
Yes.
Um. Scott?
Yes.
And. Steve, how do you feel?
I'm all in, thank you.
Chair says yes as well. So, we'll see you all, thank you, Damon, we'll see you all on the sixteenth.
October. Thank you, have a good night.
Yep, have a good night, Damon.
Thanks, guys.
All right, uh, back to the agenda, the next thing on the agenda was, uh, uh. A presentation from, um, MB. Vision Zero, and it was Elizabeth, and Elizabeth is not gonna be available, it seems it's. Almost nine o'clock this evening, she's not available for her presentation. So, that being said, we'll reschedule that for the future, um. The only other thing on the agenda was, uh, plans report, we got through most of it, I think. Kristen, do you have anything else on your plans report? Did we lose?
Yeah, sorry, um. I, no, I don't.
Okay. Great.
I'll follow up, um, by email about scheduling the site visit and also rescheduling Elizabeth and let the board know.
Thanks.
Okay, thank, thank you, Kristen, sounds great.
Yeah.
I didn't entertain any other motions at this time?
Stand vote to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Larry?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes, thanks, guys.
Yep, Scott?
Yes.
And Steve, how do you feel? Are you okay?
I welcome the adjournment.
Okay, and I say yes as well, everyone have a good night. Thank you for attending.
Thanks, Woody.